I have a list and I think what we'll do is we'll follow the order that Orem City listed them on their website. And our first candidate will be Mickey Cochran, then Jeff Lanson, then Debbie Lorre. Debbie's not here, but her husband is here tonight. And then we'll go to Sam Lentz. We'll go to those first four, and then after we get to that point, we'll do the next group. Okay, everybody, please come in. As you come and find a seat, there's still some pieces that's left over, a few hamburgers, so you're welcome to finish it up if you'd like. If not, I'm gonna have to eat it, and that would not be good for my health. There's a lot of people that I need to thank tonight. We have line, they arrange the food, all kinds of stuff. And so, we want to thank those individuals. There's really too many to name them all, or we'll be here all night. But truly, a group of people that represent all areas of Orem that helped participate to make this event happen. So, thanks to those folks for doing it. And then, maybe we ought to send somebody out to get Mickey and see if he's ready to come. Mickey Cochran is the last candidate.
Elaine, go again.
So, our format tonight is, is we're gonna give each candidate three minutes. And when that three minutes is up, I'll raise my hand, and then we'll go on to the next one. The next one after Mickey will be Jeff Lanson.
My name is Mickey Cochran. I've been a longtime resident of Orem, 36 years. Kathy and I were here when we were first married. Our first child was born right up here, 1975, five weeks after we came to Orem. For nine years after that, after I graduated, I taught 4th grade down in Spanish Fork for a half a year, and then went to church for the, or went to work for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, teaching seminary and institute down in Emery County. I finished my master's degree, came back up here to do my doctorate, and have been here ever since, since 1985. Same home. I've been, I've taken advantage of community development. Whatever they announce, and there's been a meeting, I've been there. After I retired in 2015, I decided to take an even more active role. Got involved in that. So, I was one of the first ones to volunteer, and are supposed to be the first neighborhood committee planning, or neighborhood planning committee. Got involved in that, really enjoyed it a great deal. I love Orem, which is why Kathy and I came here and didn't even think of any other place. From that point, I was asked to be a part of the planning commission, which I've been on for a couple of years, and on the board of adjustments. Because the cost for me, in my retired state at the present time, is prohibitive. Sending out mailers, doing all those types of things to me, it's a prohibitive. So, I'll have no signs, you'll have no logo calls from me. I will accept no donations at all. I'm fairly well-known in the community, and I will work hard toward the betterment of Orem. I've been involved in the State Street Corridor Master Plan, the Geneva Road Corridor. I've worked diligently and a long time with the city to get that. Communities that are just devastated. Five seconds. Thank you. I appreciate you taking a little bit closer look at me, and I will appreciate any support I can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Our next candidate is Jeff Lanson.
My name is Jeff Lanson. Can you hear me okay? We'll make that little adjustment there. So, first of all, I want to say thank you to the people of Swona for pulling this together. This has to be one of the most organized neighborhoods in the country. And, you know, it means a lot to me to see a community of people that care so much to organize something like this and come together for the betterment of our city. And so, thank you to those of you who work so hard and make this happen. A little bit about me. I have grown up, I have the privilege to grow up under the watchful eye of Mount Tickenhamis. I went to Orem High School. I met my wife, Darla, who also was an Orem High graduate. We live in Orem, we invest in Orem, we built in Orem, and we have six amazing children that have all gone to Orem schools. We love Orem, and we love the opportunity of serving in Orem. I've had the opportunity to serve on the City of Orem Family Summer Fest Committee. Served there for seven years, and also served in leadership roles there as chairman and vice chairman. I've served for two terms on the Orem Care Commission, and thoroughly enjoyed that opportunity and getting to know many of the citizens of Orem in that capacity. I've also served in lots of other ways. Boy Scout leader, one of my favorites. I've also coached countless hours on the soccer pitch, the baseball diamonds, the basketball court, and working with youth, all to help hopefully steer some of the youth of Orem in a good direction. I also am a former CEO and president of a successful publishing company, Granite Publishing and Distribution. Our whole mission was to promote, produce, publish, market, and distribute items that were positive, uplifting, and inspirational. And although we sold that company a few years ago, it is still our desire and our goal to be positive, uplifting, and inspirational in all that we do. My time is up, and so, I want to say thank you again for this opportunity. Please pick up my list of answers to the wonderful questions that have been proposed, and my contact information, so I would love to hear from you with your thoughts and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, must be taller than I am. Our next candidate is Debbie Lorre, and her husband Jim is here tonight to represent her.
I'd like to echo Jeff's thanks for Swona to put on this event. It takes a lot of work and effort to do these things, and to actually do it and accomplish it is amazing. It gives us an opportunity to meet the people and gives us a chance to discuss some of the issues that face us every day. Debbie and I met about 18 years ago. We were both volunteering up at the Soldier Hall 2002 Paralympic Games. We were both workers up there. They gave us one ticket to the closing ceremonies. And we're talking, and said, "Well, I've either gotta find a date, or I've gotta go to someone in the carpool." And she said, "Oh, I'll go with you." And then I thought, "What did I just do? She might live in Ogden, I might have an hour and a half drive." Found out that she too lived in Orem, just 10 blocks away, and both our kids were going to Tickenhamis High School. Anyway, Debbie and I have enjoyed serving in the community for a number of years. Debbie has a very good service heart. She volunteers at the Tabitha Squay Food Pantry every Wednesday from 9:00 to 11:00, and she puts together six birthday bags to bring over there so that those that are less fortunate have a chance to have a nice happy birthday for their kids. Some of Debbie's accomplishments. She worked at BYU for a number of years in the Continued Education Department. While there, she got her MBA degree, Master's of Public Administration. And after that, we got married, and she started working as the director of the American Fork Chamber of Commerce, and also became the Economic Development Director for the City of American Fork for eight years. After that was over, she decided she wanted to run her public office. And so, she needed to leave her jobs in American Fork so she could focus on Orem where we live. And so, she was a committee before she ran for office, and also, we both worked on the Summer Fest Committee. She kind of got me into it, and I worked six years doing the parade. As Jeff mentioned, it was gonna be kind of fun. He did the parade too. It's a lot of work. But Debbie impresses me because she's a great reader, and she reads 20 times faster than I do. She can read the literature and understand the things. She talks about the issues with me, goes over what the pros are, what the cons are, what the different arguments are, understands the different arguments that people have. And she studies out each vote that she has. She's, anyway, I'd like to thank again one for being here, and hopefully, my wife will be at other events that she can be at. She's not tonight, she's here tonight. She's at a baby shower that's been hosted at our house, and something that we did commit into a number of months ago. Thank you very much, and stop by our booth, and I can talk to you some more.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Sam Lentz.
Thanks, Mark. So, you're probably expecting me to have a bunch of vanilla, "This is why I'm so brave", and, you know, a bunch of kind of generic statements about freedom is good. But what I'm gonna talk to you about might be a little bit more uncomfortable than what you're saying. And frankly, the group that I'm speaking to, I recognize my audience. I know a lot of you probably aren't gonna vote for me anyway, and I get that. I'm not gonna try to convince you otherwise, but I just. Fair enough. But I just want to share with you some of the things that I've been focusing on for the last few years, that I hope even if you don't vote for me, that you can at least appreciate the approach that I've had and the way that I've tried to tackle some of those challenges. The first one is with Utopia. And a lot of you guys are lucky that you actually have Utopia in your neighborhood. I'm still in the second half of the city that's still waiting for it. But I know that my wait now is gonna be limited, so I think our neighborhood is about a year out. But I've been working with our Public Works Advisory Commission, our city staff, Utopia staff, to try to figure out what can we do to solve this problem. For so many years, it was just this political landmine that nobody wanted to get close to because there were so many hard feelings. And, you know, I've got thick skin, and I can take the heat of the conflict and those types of things. And I understand that my approach sometimes rubs people the wrong way. But the way that I try to approach those things is to be transparent beyond belief. To put myself out there, to make it clear, this is how I feel about an issue, this is why I feel about it. And then, you know, post that on Facebook, and let's have a two-way dialogue about it. So that I'm not just, you know, some talking head in a room somewhere that all you see is the result at the end of that. But I want this to be a much more interactive experience. And another thing I've been thinking a lot about recently is, and I think this group is very cognizant of, what are we doing to address the growth at UBU? I can't promise that, you know, if I'm re-elected to the city council, I'm gonna convince the state legislature to do X, Y, and Z, because I don't have that power, and I'm not gonna make a promise I can't keep. But what I would like to represent to you is I'm willing to commit to collaborate with those groups to try to find some solutions to how do we address the traffic challenges? How do we address the parking issues? One of the things I talked about in that little letter that they asked us to do is, we have this prison site up in Draper that's gonna be relocated here in the next little bit. What's gonna go into that site? I would love to see Utah's next great university go in there. Whether that's an extension of UBU, whether it's, you know, the Utah Institute of Technology right in the heart of Silicon Slopes. I think we have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to create something, a lasting legacy for our state that is gonna do a lot more for us than just building more homes and more commercial buildings. So, I know that we're not always gonna agree on issues, and frankly, I appreciate your frankness with me. Some of you already told me, "I'm not gonna vote for you," and that's fine. You know, we can still be friends, and we can still talk through some of those issues. But again, just wanna thank you so much for organizing this and giving us an opportunity to kind of express our positions and allow us to get to know you a little bit better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, our next candidate is Tommy Williams.
I probably won't go before the three minutes, but I'm Tommy Williams, I'm here for city council. I've lived in Orem my whole life. I moved to California for a couple of years and then come back. I went to Mountain View High School, graduated, went to UBU. And I love UBU, but I am against the apartment rights they put there. The main reason I'm ready, I don't feel like people in the city have a vote on city council. I don't think city council really listens to their people there, so that's why I'm ready. And before I say this, I don't have all the answers, so. But the people here, I can actually work with people. So, if I get elected, I'll actually work with the individual person to see that things happen. And I'd like to see Utah come back, or Orem come back to being Family City USA instead of Partner City USA. That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Our next candidate is Martin Runn. He might be a little bit out of breath, and I understand he had to park in Pleasant Grove or something.
Hey, how many people are proud to be from Orem? Are we proud to be from Orem?
Yeah.
Oremites, right? We're all Oremites. I transferred here 19 years ago to become an Oremite. I think it's important that we keep our culture and keep what we have. It's important that we realize the things that are important in our lives. We want this to be a good place for our families to live. How many people have their kids move back with them or are back in Orem because they lived here before? A lot? And that's what's happening. People who've lived here as kids are moving back because they love Orem. I love Orem, been here 19 years, wouldn't want to go anywhere else. But we need to be careful, and we need to plan. And I think that's the biggest thing that I bring to the table, is we just have to plan, and we have to be creative with ideas of how we're gonna, how we're gonna move forward in the years to come. Because without ideas, there's no way to get there. Now, we can, we have to develop ideas that make it Orem great. I just came from the, I was a little late, so people didn't get my brochure. I was over at the REX Center. Great thing that they're doing over there, but there's a lot of people upset, and rightly so. But I think it's, I think it's something good for the community, and I think we should support things that help the community grow, that give us opportunities for our kids, our grandkids, to enjoy what we have. Okay? I'm in it for the long haul. Nine years ago. Oh, nine years ago? I started running long distances, marathons. I finished 22 in nine years. You don't get that from sitting on a couch and complaining. You gotta get out and train, you gotta get out and do something, and that's why I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Our next candidate tonight is Spencer Ranz.
First of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here, and thanks for coming out. I know you guys have lots of things to do, and to come out here and learn about the candidates is fantastic. To know that we've got this community of people that care enough to show up and see who they're voting for and everything. My name is Spencer Ranz. I've got a family of three boys and a wife. I think we need to make sure that all the decisions that we make on city council are put in families first. As we make decisions, whether it be from a road project, or a new business, or a set of apartments, or anything like that, we have to think, "How's this gonna affect the families in the neighborhood? How is this gonna affect the families in other areas, particularly when it comes to traffic?" You know, there's certain streets in our neighborhood that have parks on one side and neighborhoods on the other, but our kids can't even cross them. And I think that there's things that we can do. We've done things over by UBU to make the streets safe for those students to cross, such as hawk signals. I definitely think we could add some of those in on some of the streets across from parks. I think that that bridge that was supposed to be built that hasn't been built, I think we need to put pressure on the parties that be to build that pedestrian bridge that would go from the west side of the I-15 to UBU, so we can get some of those vehicles off of the roads and onto that bridge, get students crossing that way. I think there's a lot of creative solutions, I think there's a lot of creative solutions that we have that can keep Orem family friendly, and that's why primary purpose for running is to. Sorry about the echo. But yeah, I think there's a lot of things we can do to keep Orem family friendly. I think we can continue to keep our taxes low through economic growth. I think if we bring more businesses in that bring us the services and goods that we want here in a smart manner, that we can keep our taxes low. I'd like to see our property taxes stay where they're at, and I'd like to be accessible to all of you guys. If you ever grab one of my flyers off the table, feel free to grab one of those. It's got my cellphone number on there. I've had people calling me today. Feel free to call me. If I don't get to the first ring, I'll give you a call back, and we talk about any issues that concern you guys. I think that all of our city council members should be accessible. Let's get, my name is Spencer Ranz, and I thank you guys so much for being here.
Thanks, Spencer. Our next candidate is David Halliday.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm really happy to be here. I have a very naturally loud voice, but I just want to check in, everyone in the back, hear me? Fantastic, thank you so much. First, I want to thank Swona for giving us this opportunity to listen to all the candidates. I know that the government sometimes gives these opportunities, but it's really good when neighbors bind together and say, "Hey, we need to have more than just what's on the table. Let's have some more opportunities to hear the candidates speak." So, I'm really grateful for that. I'll tell you a little about my background. I'm born and bred in Arizona, but I've lived in Utah for the past eight years, and I love it. I'm not even considering going back. I love my family, I'll visit them for the holidays, but Utah is my new home. And if you've met the Bussites, they're my Utah mom and dad over there. They're fantastic, I love them so much. In fact, they actually got me introduced into politics. I started hearing things about the Palace Verity Place, and naturally, I started listening a bit more, reading the papers, and over the past four months, I've been regularly attending the city council meetings, both the public and the work sections, just so I could hear, "Okay, what's being discussed at the table? What are people saying? What are the visitors coming to the public sessions saying about the REX Center and other developments that are popping up?" My background personally is, I'm a civil engineer, and problem solving is part of my core. And you know, if you're a good engineer, you make sure you have the right dimensions, and you make sure that you build it safe, and that no one does. But if you're a great engineer, you also take into account three things. And those three things are, what does the client need? What resources are at my disposal? And finally, how can I make this in the least amount of time and least amount of cost to a client as possible? And I want to take that same mindset and bring it to the government. I feel like bringing that mindset in would help solve a lot of our problems. For me personally, I have three things that I am on. The first thing is responsive and responsible housing. I think we can look at the growth up and down the Wasatch, and whether we like it or not, whether we are sad to see some old institutions go and some new ones that come in, growth is coming. And so, what I want to do, instead of bemoaning that fact, I want to say, "Okay, growth is coming here. How can we make this agreeable for the people who are moving in and the people who have been here forever?" So, the second issue, I've been talking a lot with our officers, including Chief Giles, Officer Peraskiva, and they're doing amazing work. And I am sad to hear that they're not, according to them, they're not getting paid enough, they're getting overworked, they're getting 15 to 16 calls a day trying to keep our communities safe. They reduced, five seconds? Okay, and finally, the last thing I want to say is, public safety, and then sustainable growth. And I think that's where my background as a civil engineer really comes in. Before we decide that we're gonna let growth in, we have to make sure that we have the right utilities and infrastructure in. And for me, Family City USA is not just who can come in, but how we should behave to each other. I want to see Orem, as it can use to grow, continue to grow in love towards one another. And that's why I'm running for Orem City Council. Thank you so much.
Thanks, David. Our next candidate is Terry Peterson.
Thank you, I'm Terry Peterson. I'm very passionate about Orem. I'm a lifelong resident of this city. I just came from the meeting that some of you were at where they were showing the new REX Center. I'll make one comment about that. We need more racquetball courts, not less. So, anyway, I grew up here. My high school sweetheart is Sherry Sandrup, who's sitting in the back. We met in high school. Mr. Sandrup, Keith Sandrup, maybe taught some of you to drive at Orem High. Her mother, Sherman Sandrup, taught at Mountain View High School. My mother, Mary Lou Peterson, also taught at Mountain View High School. A comment about my mother-in-law. My mother's passed away, and Keith's passed away. My mother-in-law is gonna be here tonight. She's 88, she's not feeling very well. She's been campaigning for me. If your mother-in-law campaigns for you, you know you're in pretty good shape, so I appreciate that. Just to comment, thank you, Swona, by the way. I think it's very important that we have engaged citizens, and the more people know about what's going on, the better. I want to share an experience I had as I was campaigning around the city. I really wanted to hear what people's concerns are, not have them listen to me. I do have opinions, but I asked a man in North Orem who told me, "I'm leaving Orem." I said, "You're leaving Orem?" He said, "Yes." And he has a business in North Orem. He said that since the high-density apartment came in across the street, none of his clients can park in front of his building nor in the parking behind his building. So, he's gonna move to another city. And that's a tragedy. That's, that's a issue about, we need to have proper planning. If the high-density apartment's coming in, there needs to be parking for the high-density apartment. And they need to get a proper place. And same with businesses. We need to reach out to businesses in Orem. Those that have left, we need to ask them, "Why did you go? What could we have done better as a city?" And that's a city, that's someone from the city council that should reach out to do that, not just city employees. As well as people that are leaving their homes and selling, that are gonna leave Orem. We don't want to lose you. We want you to come back, we want you to stay here. I'm running to represent you. I retired, I don't have any agenda, I don't have anybody that's working for me or pulling any strings. I'm here to represent the people of Orem. I'm passionate about this city. I grew up swimming, the pool was different then. I grew up swimming in the Stairpool. And I also grew up, this is a great job I had, scraping the gum off the floor of the Stairpool Theater and off the back of the chairs. So, that was when I was in junior high. So, from that, I have gotten better jobs. So, if you'll stop over at our table, we do have a brochure that will tell you my qualifications. I've been very involved, I have ran for office before, I was on this school board, and I have been involved in many other, as a trustee and other aspects. But my passion, thank you, Mark, my passion is the city. I care about the city. You can call me, please call me, I want to hear your opinion. My name's Terry Peterson, and I ask for your vote. My name's Terry Peterson, and I ask for your vote.
Alright, so our next, if I get this name right, I deserve an extra hamburger. David Crisbilla.
Crisbilla.
Crisbilla. Thanks, David.
Thanks for the invite. I'm not gonna talk a lot about myself. I believe in personal branding, so you can go online and find me just about anywhere, LinkedIn, personal website. I have businesses here in Orham, so come talk to me. What I wanna talk about is what you care about, which is what you want. And if that aligns with what I want, then we've got some synergy. And this might be political suicide, but, because I know we have some people here who are currently in our city government, but one of my frustrations is most recently, I felt powerless. I felt powerless that my voice wasn't listened to and wasn't heard in a recent scenario where I live right across the street from UVU. Now, I'm conflicted, because I also work for the business school at UVU. I'm a professor at UVU. But, so you wanna understand my integrity, I not only signed the petition that I campaigned for the petition because my personal family was affected by that, which is more important than my job, which was in jeopardy because of how I acted and how I behaved. At least that's a little bit of a character reference for you about who I am. But what I think we're lacking in Orham, honestly, I mean, we've got issues, transportation, crime, whatever it might be. Yet what we're lacking is leadership. These problems can be solved with a great vision and great leadership. And this might be a first step to get us some great leadership, and you'll vote with your feet and by mail as to whether or not you agree that we've got a leadership problem here in Orham City. What I, my eyes have been opened, just as I applied for City Council, I have been approached by seven special interest groups in about a week and a half, all looking for ways to drive me one way or another way into their interest. And I think what's happening now is we're using those special interest groups against each other, and it's causing a lot of conflict in Orham. It's causing a lot of conflict when we, just remember, Orham has... I'd love for you to know what development you get there. Thanks.
David, thank you. And our last candidate of the night is Michelle Jensen.
Hi, thanks for being here. I'm super excited that there are people that are this invested to come out and take your time on a nice summer evening to be here and learn about us. My name is Michelle Jensen. I am, I'm sorry, I'm not a pedigree pioneer Oremite. I am a transplant. And that's kind of why, one of the reasons why I'm excited to add my voice to the council. I would love the opportunity to add, I don't know if you've noticed, I look a little bit different from most of the council members. There's that, and then there's my phase of life, and then I think, I'm really, I have... My husband is around here somewhere, my son's right there. I've got two little children. We're in just a totally different phase of life than a lot of the council members, and I think there's a large chunk of our population that I represent. And I am super excited to try to drag them out to the polls, because I think they don't really show up so much. So that's one of the reasons why I'm running. And another reason is I just, I love living here. I've only lived here for three years. And we, I, that was because I took a job at University Place. I was brought on to kind of launch all of the events that you see there now at the Orchard. I got that off the ground and got my hands really dirty just digging into the community and all of these incredible organizations and businesses and groups that are around that are longtime staples of Orham. I got to interact with them, be a part of them. I got to make relationships and form collaborations with them. And mostly in that event role, what I got to gain was a love of Orham as a community, because with an events, I've come from an events background. I used to work for also the Dirty Dash and some other big events. But when you're in an events industry, you get to really just interact one-on-one with the individual, and that's kind of what I love. I love to interact with you one-on-one. I would much rather do that than some online behind-the-scenes dialogue. I think it's so much better to look you in the face and talk to you and listen to you. So I think that experience in events helps me be able to feel capable of interacting with people one-on-one, in person, listening to them, and also... I am just, I would love to have a place where I just, sorry, I just closed on my house in Orham today, so I'm officially here for the long haul. And I've got these kids in, you know, our neighborhood schools. I take them to the Rec Center. We're at the splash pad, we're at the pool, we're at the library. And so all of the programs that we offer and the resources that we have as a city and that we offer are very important to me, and I'm super invested in where we're headed in that way. I'm invested in our rapid growth, and I would like to be a part of that decision-making and how, what direction we take the city. And so I think, as one of the, a couple of the other candidates have mentioned, wrapping up, that the growth is inevitable, and so I wanna be strategic and smart about that, hear all the voices. I'd love to offer up my voice. I hope it's a voice that you can resonate with. And if not, I would still love to hear you and hear you out, shake your hand, and I am grateful for your voice as well. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Michelle. If I can speak in plain Utah language, oh my head. We have got some good candidates voting. And we have some hard decisions. And I'd like to thank them for coming out tonight. And we wanna turn the rest of the time back over to them, go and visit their tables, find out about their visions. And I wanna thank you for coming out tonight, too. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
How many candidates are we voting for?
Well, there's eleven. There are eleven candidates. There'll be a primary that'll happen in about a month or so.
How many seats?
Three. Three seats.
Six?
Well, there's only three seats. Six will probably end up in the...
Yeah, we should know that.
Bar choice. This team starts the twenty-seventh of July.
Well?